That's all it takes. Where have we got it? Here we go. All right, we're gonna call our regular council meeting to order. Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, five P. M. With requesters, turn your cell phones down or off and with a roll call, please. Here, please stand and take your hats off.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and, Lord, it's with a heavy heart that we would ask, Lord, that you would have peace in this country, that the killing of innocent people because of their views in life. We just ask, Lord, for your outpouring of your spirit all across this land, that there will be peace. And so we just ask for your wisdom tonight in dealing with the issues here in South Boy. And we pray for peace here in Jesus.
All right, we'll get a approval agenda. Get a motion, please.
No move, say it.
All in favor? Four oh, public comment. Raise your hand, please. Stand. Just give your name, please.
My name is Joshua Lloyd. I see there's some fire department things on the agenda today. It's taken a long time to get here. This is my exit from this. There's some input I can have, but I don't feel like citizens' input means much. Seems like we said there wasn't a problem and the only people that were seen were problems were disgruntled employees or friends. I don't believe that to be true. I believe we actually did have a problem. I think another town showed us we had a problem. I think another town admitted that we had a problem. I think another town admitted that they had a problem. We all had a problem. I've heard on the news we're gonna do it many different ways. Harlem Rosco, third party. Obviously, a chief saw the agenda. I said we might be hiring an employee before we hired a chief. Regardless of how this is gonna go, I brought in some stickers today. These are the same stickers that I handed up. You said people had two years to talk about, the people that were wearing these. But we need it now. We need it. The people knew that we needed it based on messaging. I hope that you know that we need it. And the only way this is gonna work is if you guys do it. Thank you for your time.
He had a problem to start with. There was a problem we had to start with. So I'm not gonna start elaborating on this here, but when we got a letter that we were gonna, they were gonna cancel our certificates and lose our license for the ambulance because of poor attendance, poor medicine, handing out the wrong medicine, all this stuff, we had a problem. We had to take care of it. We went to Boy. And the problem, guys like him, which I don't know why he left, but, and a lot of other people that constantly badgered the people that were our fire department people and kept complaining about it till a point where all it was was made this whole town toxic with the fire department. And I'll tell you what, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen from here on out, but we're gonna, we're gonna hire a fire chief, chances are, with a vote tonight, and we'll go from there. But we had a good fire department here. We got a hundred percent on our ambulance from the town of Boy. And if it wasn't for all the negative stuff around here, it would, we probably would've had a third employee instead of the way it went. And I tell you, every one of these people, and I tell you, you can look through Facebook every day and see how negative people were to this, the fire department that we had. And I don't know, it just disgusts me with the whole deal. But that's my viewpoint. Like it or not, I guess. Approval of the minutes, approval of the minutes. Yeah. You got anybody else? Go ahead, stand up.
Ralph Scalluck, I just wanna make a comment. I believe the direction you're heading in, hiring a sole person to oversee it rather than have a committee, get some versatile opinions, is wrong. I think people have now the same path we're trying to get away from right now in regards to the fire department. Been a sore spot for everybody for a long time. And I just don't feel the gentleman that you have selected has the qualifications for that position. Plus, in the past, he has brought lawsuits for the city to have to handle. And I think that should be relevant to the hiring of.
We don't have anybody in line for hiring.
We didn't got anybody in line.
We're going out to, to the law.
To hire a person to oversee.
Yes.
Hire Miller?
Through the city.
Paperwork.
That's, that's not, that has nothing to do with the chief.
Nothing to do with.
Nothing. No, that, that person.
Has nothing to say with what the chief.
No, nothing.
Or any of anything.
He's the secretary of the fire department and keep all the records that need to be kept because we haven't had enough people down there to do it.
Yeah, that I understand.
That's all he's doing.
That's all that is.
We are. We're gonna talk about it later on, but it's a, we are going out to get a department, a committee, which would be the Fire Chiefs Association, to find us like they do in all towns. Every town that, get professional people to find us a fire chief. And then we'll vote on it. We'll go from there. They'll get eight or ten, eight or ten applicants. They'll interview them and then they'll come down here and we'll, we'll probably go with whatever they suggest or the two or three people, and then we'll have to dig through that. But it's, rather than have us go and try to find a fire chief, we'll have the professionals find a fire chief and bring it to us. And then when we'll go with probably, you know, on their recommendation, I would imagine. But wait, that, that on the back, that on the back, Nick Miller, Nick Miller's gonna be down. And all he's, all he's doing is, all he is going to do is keep records and do all the paperwork and maybe try to find some grants to, you know, whatever grants they can get and stuff like that. That's.
As I interpreted when I looked up that position, it seemed to say it was a lot more than just.
No.
Records.
Mayor, I can talk more about that position when we get to that.
Okay, we talked, no, it don't matter. Whatever you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that. Anybody else? Uh, lay over.
Are we done with public comment?
Anybody else?
No, I asked that. Why do we have to lay over the approval of minutes? Need to lay them over? What? All right. Get a motion, layover, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held September second, twenty twenty-five. Get a motion.
No move, say it.
All in favor? Lay it over. Okay, report of officers, report of approval of claims to be paid, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to what? But whatever.
September twelfth.
Huh?
September twelfth.
September twelfth?
Yep.
To August thirtieth, or August thirtieth to September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Okay.
In the amount of five hundred twenty-three thousand, four ninety-six, twenty-three. Motion.
Good second.
Say it.
All right. Any questions? No questions? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickerson, Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Yes. Attorneys report.
Just a brief report this evening that we are coming up on the time where we'll need to look at a new garbage contract. Your last garbage contract was for a ten-year term with the, with Rock River Disposal. It's now been purchased by a company called Waste Connections. We've received some preliminary pricing from Waste Connections or Rock River Disposal. I'll be contacting each of the members of the council to go over that. At this time, in view of the prices that we know have been obtained via a request for proposal process done by the village of Roscoe just two years ago, it doesn't appear as though going out for RFP would actually solicit a cheaper price than what you're currently being offered, but I'll be reaching out to the council and just asking for some direction on how you'd like to proceed.
Just a minor note on that is our garbage pickup is, we made a contract in twenty fifteen and that, for ten years, and everybody said that was, they didn't like it at the time, but now we found out that was a real, real good deal. So, and I'm just warning everybody, the garbage prices are going up and they're gonna go up because that's, they're, they're the ones that set the price. And we'll, we'll talk about that at another meeting. Okay, reports, city administrator.
I just have a public comment, Mayor, for the group. The first thing is I handed out a proposed budget timetable of the remainder of the year. This is how Don keeps us on track to make sure that we see our publications and have a draft budget in place by the time we should and then get it adopted for twenty twenty-six. This year, we are a little bit cramped because we still don't have our audit in twenty-four complete. So, you know, hopefully those auditors will be here the second meeting in October. And we'll get that buttoned up and final so that we can have accurate numbers going into our twenty-six budget. But at the next council meeting on October second, you guys will adopt this. So I just wanted to give it to you as an early heads up to kind of mark your calendar, but it looks very similar to years past where we have a lot of budget meetings on Mondays and the publications happen on Thursday and Friday. But pretty much all of late October, November, and early December, we're gonna get a whole lot closer on Monday nights. So prepare yourself for that.
Hey, I know that I know mine. Can you talk to why we don't have the audit completed yet?
Yes. Don, do you want to? I mean, you probably do a better job. That counts them regularly, but.
I, the only thing I know is a staffing issue. That when we go to bids, there basically are two firms now that bid, and that's Sukich and Matibok. And I think both of them are overwhelmed with the number of audits that they have. And, you know, typically, they, they came in early May and were supposed to be here for two or three days. And one guy was here for about a half a day and the other guy for a couple of days. And once they pull off and go to other jobs and they try to finish it up on a piecemeal basis. So unfortunately, you know, we're at the end of our contract and so we'll, we'll be needing to decide whether or not we're going to go for additional proposals or try and see what their conditions are for the next three-year period. But unfortunately, with, with a lot of the gas fees that are coming out, local firms don't wanna, just don't have capability. And beside with our sewer loans, we're considered a single audit. And so because of that, it complicates the audit. Small firms would prefer to do school districts rather than municipal governments. And once they leave, staffing-wise, it just gets harder to, you know, and they're asking for stuff the second, third time in some cases, you know. So, you know, I have a draft in the, the adjustments that they're proposing. Basically, a re-class, changing classifications. For example, the EMT is being broken out as a separate line item rather than just combined with ambulance fees and.
G E M T.
G E, what is that? G M B?
You said E M G.
So anyway, it's just, to my knowledge, it should, they should be able to get it completed, but Matibok is a little bit different in that the audit staff is not the ones that prepare the report. And so there's a whole different group that prepares the report. And so where they are in all the other reports that they may have, that's part of the issue.
Fair enough.
I'll add that, you know, we're not the only ones. We know that a lot of our neighbors are struggling with this too. Some people even sit further back than we are. And also, I will add that the team that we have in place to respond to our auditors, like Commissioner Edelman, you have provided response on a lot of different things. Our attorney's office has to provide several responses to questions. And our staff has to provide a lot of records. Our side of the process is fast. You know, we, when the auditor is asked, we jump and our team is able to provide them everything that they need very, very quickly. It's really a staffing issue on our end.
Thank you.
That's why it's hard.
All right, thank you.
Second, I have a couple more questions. Okay, the next item that I want to share is that I've been working with Rockford Area Arts Council for about a year now to incorporate a spread of their reach and just kind of spread their knowledge and wisdom throughout the county and kind of get it outside of Rockford. The first wave of that was getting connected with people who could help us do professional mural. And now the second wave of that is that we are going to be gifted, at no cost to our city, a, about a six-foot red-headed woodpecker that is done out of mosaic tiles by children that were in the Spark program. So the Rockford Area Art Council reached out to the Confluence. Julie was ecstatic and said, you know, please make sure that it's okay with the city, but I have the perfect spot for it. She's found the spot over at the Confluence that she would like to have this. And really, all we have to do is ask our street's crew to put in a concrete path. So I asked Brandon and Steve to kind of look at the requirements for that. They seem to think that they can handle it. And so we are about to be gifted a six-foot huge, beautiful mosaic piece of art that the children in the Spark program did. So it's pretty cool. So watch for that. That, especially when it costs us nothing. Continue to invest that. The next item I wanted to mention is that we have our second of two public meetings for the OSLAD grant. This is nothing really new from our last two grant applications, but we do want to try to do as much public involvement and engagement as we can. So Brandon will be spearheading this one. It's from three until four o'clock this week, Wednesday, at the Confluence. We did one last week on Thursday in the evening, and we probably got about six people total, I think, that kind of came. So the application's not changing a lot, so it's something new. And that's probably why we're not getting overwhelming questions or responses. But six is so good. We want, we want to know about it if they do. And then lastly, Tracy and I will be in Chicago the last half of the week for the Illinois Misfleeb Conference. That's all I've got for you. And it's Steve's quarterly report for the streets and parks.
Quick question, maybe just about the, what was that corporate cup that happened last week, Tom's down, out of the disc golf?
Yeah, so I think they had a, I think it was a five P. M. to seven P. M. event for corporate cup. We were closely connected with Pam Ankenz. Participants of the corporate cup through the state line YMCA had the option to do disc golf or something else. So it wasn't all the participants. Like, I would really love to hope to have hundreds of people going to the park. But still, I saw a handful of pictures. It looked like easily there were fifty to seventy-five people that went to the park. So those are probably all people who had never been in South Boy City Park before or played at our disc golf course. So either way, fifty to seventy-five people is fantastic. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I give an update on something?
Yeah, sure.
So just want everybody to know that I heard from the Winnebago County Highway Department, actually regarding a D C E O grant that we applied for back in twenty twenty-one. Went through a few years of paperwork, but I did just receive confirmation from Winnebago County that they received the funding and our analogist asking for an invoice from, yeah, invoice from the city. So essentially, we are getting reimbursed for construction costs related to a twenty twenty-one project through a D C E O grant. So that'll be in the tune of a hundred thousand dollars, actually, that we're getting back. So I just heard from the county today.
Well, why is it?
I've got an email from the county saying, so.
Only took four years.
Yeah.
So that, that is no restrictions on how we spend that hundred thousand because it's money we already gave them?
To see what paperwork, but my understanding is no, that it's just reimbursing the city for past funding. So I do not believe it comes with any stipulations, but we'll.
But I mean, it's not like a, one of the road grants where you, but we will put it probably in the road, I would imagine.
I would assume. So, yeah, once we get the information over to Winnebago County Highway Department, I'm sure they'll have some paperwork. So I'll just, I'll keep you guys updated on that.
All right. Congratulations. That's a good deal. Finally something come our way. All right, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, the new street sweeper is on its way. They're telling me to wait here either this Friday or possibly Monday. I should have a final confirmation on that pretty soon. The loop has been repaired at Gardner and South Park. I don't know if anybody, nobody.
Yes, I did.
But it was catering to South Park instead of Gardner. So even with nobody on South Park, it would stop everybody on Gardner for a short amount of time. So that's all done and repaired.
Yeah, well, at four thirty in the morning, I'd stop there and it'd be red going out to I ninety and there was not a car in sight. No, but they hit them. They hit them.
Yeah, they hit the loop when they were repairing one of the inlets out there. So we finally got that fixed.
All right. Good work. Good job.
With Brian, he had okayed me to rent a skid loader and a coal planer from Alton for Cat from Rockford. We had that for two weeks with some of the high spots, rough spots on Black Hawk, Gardner, Willow Brook, and Dearborn Avenue, just to try and get us by for another year or two for the, for the rough part of the road. I gave all my guys a chance to run it. None of them had, even Ryan, being here as long as he had, had never run any coal planer or a skid loader. So that'll get a chance to get in there for at least a half a day's worth and get some knowledge. So. But then pot hole patching with hot mix. We have been working on a list of in-house cat bases repaired. We've got six completed. Three that are under construction. We had three more to start on, but I found another one. So we're gonna have four more to start on. We're hoping we'll get them all done this year. We're going pretty good on them. Contracted cat bases have been repaired at Adams, Ferlin, Wheeler, South Park, and Gardner. Still working on final lumber for Miss Lane Sweeper, or Seepers, and the Villas Oakfield. And then the engineering is still being done on the drainage issues over on Little Road. The clock on the boulevard has been updated. My guys assisted a very, a clock company. They installed a new drive motor, new drive arms, clock hands, LED lighting, and a control module for the clock.
They also cleaned it and it looks wonderful. So if you haven't noticed, the clock is fully functioning out of all four sides and the times all match. And you can see lines and hash marks on that clock that we've never seen before.
Yeah. And the next thing we're gonna do is pull the clocks off and have vinyl figures put back out that says South Boy. That'll be coming here soon. We've done the third round of roadside mowing. We're planning on doing one more about mid-October. Been keeping up on the boulevard going. We, we did a bunch of tree and brush trimming on the boulevard. We just did our six-month level changes and moved on all our pickup trucks in-house. We're down to two summer homes now. Something I need to add to this is we had two full-time, or year-round, part-time guys. Mark has decided that he was retiring again and he is, he was, last Friday was his last day. So we're gonna be looking for another year-round part-time guy in the three days of the week. If you guys know anybody. We're gonna be getting the old sweeper ready to be sold at auction. I'm hoping to have that on the next agenda for cleaning. We did some housekeeping around the fire department. We fixed the sign out front, cut down a small tree in the back that was dead. Turned out some trees on the side of the building that were rubbing on it. And then we removed a broken brick bath in the front. Eddie Rhodes has completed most of the brick repairs at two twenty-five period and six twenty-four. We'll bid for the parking lot for Downey Drive, and I believe that's amazing for the night. Going in the parks, again, keeping up on the mowing and the weed eating. Disc office has some movement. They had a contractors, a couple contractors do some bidding. And the contractor that won started working on the last few fairways in the woods. He's got like a flare mower that fits on the front of his skid loader and that thing just does amazing for clearing in the woods. I'm not sure when he's planning on starting the second round. I'm hoping to get set up with Mark and Chad and see if he still gets at least nine more passports this year. We've done some tree trimming around the lake this year to open up more views around the park. We'll be pulling the dock mid-October. We're gonna start looking for new dock options for next year. The current one we have is just life's family. It's gonna get really weak and start to bottom. And then I don't know if you've been down in the park lately or not, but the bridge that crosses the lake on two sides, we had some bad washout areas. We ended up cutting those out with the backhoe, putting timbers in and making steps that actually go down to the lake for people to get better access with and some tree paths with a blacktop on the bike path. And that's pretty much it.
Couple notes here. The street sweeper, we, we purchased an ambulance, but we couldn't get it this year. So we took that funds and purchased a street sweeper. But the funds for next year for the street sweeper will be for the ambulance. So it's, we're not, we're, we're still getting both. We're just changing the years on it. And I seen somebody, I saw, I saw somebody on Facebook put something on there about an alleyway. I can't remember what alleyway it was. But like, I want to tell everybody, if you've got a problem with an alleyway or something like that, best thing you do is contact City Hall. Putting it on Facebook, you won't get much done.
Mayor, I can add, the city of South Boy has an app now. And I know everyone doesn't function with an app, but it has our city logo on it. And so if you just search South Boy and you find it, there is a GPS coordinate built into our app where all you have to do is click report an issue, and it can be a code violation. It can be a stray animal. It could be anything, a dead animal, roadkill. It could be any of these things. But it's a really easy way to say, yep, it's right here where I'm standing, and it will pull the coordinates so our staff knows exactly where to go. And then this funnels, depending on the type of complaint or report that someone's submitting, it funnels to the appropriate department that's then need to have it. So it really is a helpful tool. So even better than calling City Hall. You're welcome. Is to, to use that app. But the app is working wonderfully. We've had it for about six months now, but we didn't do a huge job of promoting it because we wanted to kind of hire enough teams. But now, as a reminder, through that same app, we can get to a way to, you can use that app or you can get to our webpage to submit things like a fence permit. I mean, it is all digital now and available on our webpage and our app is working. All of those things are even better than, you know, maybe calling a department where someone can answer right away and they get it to the right person. It's just immediately gets paid for trial and the right person's same time.
Is there any reason I don't know about this?
Do you use that?
I mean, I just wondered. I just.
I was gonna say maybe.
Pay more attention or what? Huh?
Maybe.
Oh, do you? I don't know nothing about it. Okay, well, I'm glad. All right. I don't. I have no idea. All right, moving on. Can't fix that. So, all right, go on to new business. Discuss, approve ordinance twenty-eight sixty-six, enacting a temporary memorandum on an issues of issuing tobacco license motion.
No move.
Second.
Say it.
All right, you want to explain this? I could, but I'm not going to.
Yeah, really interesting. Probably do a better job, but I, I just don't think that the licenses that we have issued for tobacco licenses are accurate. And we just need a moment to kind of review our business licenses and make sure that folks that should have a primary tobacco business license have so.
That's right. It's a six-month moratorium for that purpose.
So.
Just for staff to, to, if they're already doing it.
Trying to make a distinction between a cigarette shop and a quick trip or, you know, something like that where you sell multi-things or sell just cigarettes. And we're only gonna have, we're gonna have a limit, but it'll, it'll show up later on.
We already have a limit of six of these, Mayor, and right now we only have two issued. But before we go to the effort of sending out business license renewals, we just gotta make sure that works.
All right. Tracy.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickerson, Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Yes, discuss, discuss, approve ordinance twenty-eight sixty-seven, amending section one oh-two forty-six, parking at night, parking boats, other vehicles, objects, parking commercial vehicles of Division One generally of Article Two, stopping, standing, parking on chapter one oh-two traffic and vehicles. Motion, please.
No move. Say it.
Who's got this one?
I do. Mayor, this is just clarification. We had an improper statutory citation in a ordinance. It could have even been an editing error on Unicode's part. So it's just to clear up that statutory citation.
All right, just clearing up the ordinance. All right. Motion, or we got Tracy, please?
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickerson, Mayor Fitzgerald.
Yes, discuss approved resolution sixty-six thirty-six, approve an agreement with the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association to provide fire chief employment search services for the city of South Boy Fire Department. Motion, please.
No move. Say it.
I can go over this.
Yes, ma'am.
So you have a proposal that you've received from the Illinois Association, Illinois Fire Chiefs Association. The sum total of the estimated cost summary is roughly, and again, assuming all package pieces are incorporated, about fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars on the interview. about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. The interviews would range between thirty-seven hundred to five thousand. The job advertisement to be developed by the Chiefs Association would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's a laundry list of different places that they are recommending that the job be posted. And then they do some resume review that they quoted at two thousand. The additional cost comes in the assessment centers. As members of this council may recall in the past, for either a police chief search or for a fire chief search, we have engaged the respective professional organizations to hold an assessment center where candidates are invited to come and participate in sessions, answering questions and being interviewed by a panel of other fire chiefs. So the all-in cost that the proposal would, would bring would be in the neighborhood of fourteen thousand five hundred. We didn't put a price in the resolution that you received because we didn't know what the cost was at the time when the resolution was being prepared. So we would ask that council authorize the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association to perform the employment search for the next chief of the South Lloyd Fire Department at a cost of roughly fourteen thousand five hundred.
So make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution sixty-six thirty-six. Get a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
To, to change it to not to exceed fourteen five hundred. Yeah, this is, and this is open to every fire chief. This is not, this is what, when these people, the Illinois Fire, or Fire Chiefs Association and Illinois, when they go looking, it's, whomever puts their application in, they'll take a look at it. It's not like it's here, this area or that area. It's whatever put your application in.
I'd just like to comment that I don't want to see us cutting corners on any of this. The cost is fourteen thousand dollars. The cost is fourteen thousand dollars. We need to get this done and done right and put a squash to the negativism that comes with everybody thinking they ought to be doing better.
I'm a hundred percent for that.
I don't want to say.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you know, we all know this has been pretty emotionally charged, I don't know, a year and a half, two years of fire department volleying back and forth. To me, I thought it is important that we have involved, you know, an emotionally unattached, unbiased third party to this search. Ralph, I know you mentioned a committee. I, I think this helps with that. I think you and I can sit in the same room and agree. There's been a lot of, you know, emotion attached back and forth, right? So that's where for me, I want it to be a fair kind of search, something that involves a wide net of people. I really think it's important that we, you know, bring in some sort of fairness to this search. And I know that this organization will do that. I am committed, and I know all of us are committed, to ensuring this is a, a full and unbiased search to find somebody that can help lead the department in the right direction for the future. And that's, that's what I'm.
They will weed, this, this fireman association, the Fire Chiefs Association will weed it down to how many, let's say they get twenty applicants. They'll, they'll go through all the interviews and all that stuff and they'll bring it down. We will not be involved in none of that. That's nothing to do with us. When they get it down to two or three, they will give their recommendation. Then we will probably have interviews, I would imagine, with them and then, that's correct, right? We'll have interviews with them and then we'll make our choice out of the final two or three or four, whomever, whatever they come up with. That's what the situation will be. Anybody else?
Yeah. So two things. First one, just directly related to this contract. I'm, I'm in agreement with everything, you know, bringing people in and how we're gonna do this. My one point on their cost structure that I would like us to push back slightly on is number one, the focus interviews with the stakeholders. They should have done the vast majority of that when they just prepared the study for us. I think we should at least ask because they were just here performing the study and doing all of the interviews with our people, Lloyd people, Harlem Rock. You know, they, they went around and they did all kinds of interviews. I would think that they could trim that down a little bit because they've, they were here in the last sixty days.
That's a good suggestion, yeah.
I, I think, I think it's worth asking. Again, I don't want to, I agree with Kenny. I agree with Ryan. I don't want that to hold this up by any means, but I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to ask that questions. They just prepared a study and went down the rabbit hole on our organization. They should have some pretty good notes on that.
Should put a pretty good eye on our organization, what we have for, for everything.
So, I, like I said, I, I'm in favor of everything we're talking about, but I would like us to just see if they're willing to trim, trim that back. And maybe that is trimmed. Maybe the fee was supposed to be eight thousand and I don't know that. So I just think it's worth the ask.
I'd like to ask, I will follow up and you know, kind of reach out to everyone and give you a response. The one thing I will say is, is we don't want us to have to come back to another meeting.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. So.
You make canceled. Meeting two, get this.
I, I a hundred percent agree with you. I just, let's ask the question. Let's, let's make sure our motion is worded so that we can move forward. You know, however we need to do.
Okay.
So, so that was, that was my, my first point. My second point, I just want to go global as far as the community and the fire department for a second, since I haven't had a chance to speak yet. So, you know, I, I think, I think Ryan stated it very well. You know, this, what, what this whole situation has done to our community is frankly, it's toxic. And, you know, we've, I've watched people that used to be friends with each other, no longer speak to each other, baden out with each other. You know, we can blame whatever we want to blame, but you know, if, if you don't believe us, you know, listen to us up here, you know, regardless of what decisions were made in the past and whether things went the way they were planned or not, we're gonna make things better, plain and simple. We're gonna make things better. We're gonna do this the right way. So I'm glad you came and asked a question about what was on the agenda because, you know, that you didn't interpret it, you know? And, and so I'm glad you asked the question because this is what is happening for the fire chief. You know, that other position has nothing to do with this. In fact, the other position is part of, is an example of that fire study. The fire study said we needed somebody to be a records clerk and we needed somebody to handle stuff. So it's an example of us listening to that fire study. So, so anyways, I, I just, I want to see our community lower it a few octaves, you know? I understand there's been a lot of heated moments, a lot of heated, just by, whatever you want to call it. And, and we need to, you know, if, if anything has come to light in the last few weeks, you know, is, we all need to understand sometimes we're gonna agree, sometimes we're gonna disagree. And, you know, you can like our decisions or not like our decisions. But, you know, we, we need to be civil and we need to, you know, figure out how to help this community heal. And I think this is one step in the right direction. Thank you.
Well, we don't need to amend this, so. No, we got it.
You need a. Yep. No, you just need a roll call vote on the amendment and then a roll call vote on the actual resolution itself.
We're amending this to say that the fourteen five, but we already did that.
Yeah, there was already a motion, a second on that. So you just need a roll call vote on that amendment.
And that was already up too.
Yeah, right.
We're good.
Tracy, please.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Yes.
And then now you need a roll call vote on the origi, on the, the, the resolution as amended.
Uh, motion?
We have a motion.
We already have a motion in a second.
Tracy. So I thought.
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Passes. For, discuss approved resolution sixty-six thirty-seven, authorize an application for open space land acquisition development grant and commitment of funds. Motion please.
Second.
Okay. Whose is this?
I can take this one later, but we're gonna feel free to add it if I miss anything. Just as we did two years ago when we went after an O B A grant to the match, I think it's one point two.
Six hundred dollars in matching.
Yeah. So if, if we go after a project that is worth one point six million, or one point two million or more, they will match fifty percent up to that one point two. So in order for us to do a resolution and tell the state, the I D N R, that we are going to put six hundred into that matching. This is part of that process to improve your application. So we did budget five hundred thousand in twenty twenty-five in case we should have been awarded it. We didn't. And now we're gonna try to budget it again in twenty twenty-six should we be awarded this.
Yeah, we got turned down in twenty twenty-five.
We actually have gone after this grant twice. Each time I feel like our packages is better and better. The first time, Theresa Oldenburg went after this grant for us and when she was the director at Nature of the Confluence. The second application, we felt like it was a much better application because we had started to do some, some cleanup efforts and we had a better master plan part though. We really went after the amenities. And then now this application, we're also layering the one point four million dollar cleanup grant that we just got from the E P A to clean up the fuel, concrete pylons that are over there, just in order for the derelict. So every time we continue to show this increased layer of support, we send out about thirty asks for supporting letters and we have about ten of them that are already submitted. So that's already more letters of support than we have to source. And we're doing more public meetings. We put it in more places as publication. And every time we get closer and closer to being awarded. So we feel like, you know, that part will never be completely solved if we don't get some assistance from the state with us. So this is the best package available to help get this development going. So what we're asking tonight is a obligation to spend the six hundred thousand, should we be awarded the full one point two.
Should we be awarded?
Should we be awarded. And if we're not, then we get more money in cash.
Tracy.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Yes, discuss approved resolution sixty-six thirty-eight, authorize the city to approve copy machine lease agreement, print maintenance agreement subject to addendum with impact of the city of South Lloyd.
Motion. Second.
This is just a renewal for both of our departments, copy machines. It actually saves us money each month because as a lease package gets promoted, it costs more and more to maintenance the machine and more and more to run it every month. So I can't remember the exact number, but do you remember Tracy, what this saves us every month? I want to say it's like four hundred dollars between the two departments. Sign up for five more years.
Okay, Tracy.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Yes, discuss approved resolution sixty-six thirty-nine, approving awarded bid to O'Brien Civil Works, Inc. for Downer Drive Parking Lot Expansion Project. Motion please.
Motion. Second.
Who gets this? Yep.
So as you guys have your packets, we have a recommendation letter for O'Brien Civil Works. They were one of the five bidders that submitted for this project. If you recall, this is just a parking lot expansion at the new streets facility. The low bid, O'Brien Civil Works, they are out of Leak Organ, Illinois. They do great work. I haven't worked with them in a handful of years, but they are a qualified bidder. We did check their affidavit of availability, which is basically their schedule of contracted work upcoming. Does appear that they have the openings and their project schedules to be able to get this completed on time. Another thing, if you recall, when we approved these, the bid specifications, we set this up as a base bid and an alternate bid. The only difference between the two was the completion date. So the base bid was a completion date of this fall and then the alternative was a completion of next spring. Since there wasn't a huge cost savings for holding off until next spring, Fair Gray was awarding the base bid contract to O'Brien to look at that work this fall.
In fact, it was actually ten thousand dollars more to the next spring.
Anybody else? Tracy.
Mr. Prentice?
So I'm struggling with this one. As you all know, or if you forgot, I was not in favor of this project initially. But since this is not about whether or not the project's gonna move forward and it's simply about choosing the appropriate bid, I will vote yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yes, approve an agreement with Standard and Associates. Motion.
Motion. Second.
And this is Don?
No, this one's chief.
Chief?
This is the.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
This is a company that the Board of Fire and Police Commission uses to assist us with the hiring process. They, they provide the rig test. They'll provide a structure if needed and things like that. We, it's kind of a standard agreement. They just want to regulate this law.
Now we will be reviewing.
Okay. You got a motion in a second?
We have a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, discuss approve hiring Nick Miller as part-time administrative compliance officer for the fire department at twenty-two dollars an hour. Motion.
So move. Second.
I can take this one, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So coming out of the Illinois Chiefs Association study, one of the things that was highlighted as a strong recommendation was that we hire someone that works for the city to kind of serve between the stacking agreement with the town of Lloyd and our city, just to ensure that our policies and procedures are being met. There are areas where the town of Lloyd may operate out of their policies and procedures and it makes it really easy for all of a sudden us to be kind of liable if, if our policies and procedures say we're gonna do one thing and the town of Lloyd's that, so it's traded another way. So this needs to be someone who has fire science and background to review contracts and policies and procedures in the fire world, which I am not. We did have a part-time person, but since she had left us about six months ago, we've not replaced her role because the town didn't really need administrative help. But here we have an opportunity to change that position up a little bit. And I think it allows us an opportunity to reimburse someone to be responsible for our G E M T funding. Right now, this employee is actually doing it, but then the town of Lloyd charges us and then we pay the town of Lloyd to make sure that our G E M T work is done. So it's kind of clunky. But in addition to that, Nick will also be responsible for going after small grants. There are two out there right now, one through the fire marshals and one through Illinois American Water. And I feel like we have a really good shot at both of those if we had someone day to day that could kind of plug and go. The last item that I think is really critical right now are FOIA requests. We have information requests constantly and it is sometimes difficult. You know, Chief Snyder works on for twenty-four and then off for forty-eight. And if we catch him on that off for forty-eight and he happens to be on vacation, sometimes our FOIA request or, or various informations or reports can be clunky. So this person will serve in between the city and the town to make sure that our city's policies and procedures are being monitored, protected. Someone with some fire knowledge instead.
Thanks a lot.
Right now he will report to me, but he doesn't always do it.
Tracy.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
Mr. Edelman?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
There'll be no executive session tonight, so I get a motion to adjourn. Call a favor? Thank you for coming, everybody.